Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening. It's the hour seven o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to the March 4, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Start by introducing the board to my right, Selectman Dan Shartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And this evening, we have our Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy with us. Good evening, in place of Mr. Dean, who is watching spring training games and soaking in the rays in Arizona. With us as well, our Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel. Good evening.
Good evening.
And my name is Nico Papakosindis. We were to have a board interview at 6:50, however, the interviewee is either running late or had a conflict, so we will move ahead. First item on the agenda this evening is public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to come forward with comment to the select board. We do ask if your comment is relative to an agenda item, that you wait. If not, I will pause and welcome anybody up to the podium. And just if you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ann Kenny. I live at 3 Walnut Street.
Good evening.
Been here for years and years. I know many of you. And I thought I would just read what I wrote, because if I just talk, it might take longer.
That's okay.
And I'm not good off the--
You can do both.
Public speaking is not my forte. But I time myself, and this doesn't go over six minutes, apparently.
You're fine.
Okay, so, anyway, I'm here to talk about the paid parking idea. I did go to the Stand Tech Consultants' presentation at Town Hall, and then I watched your meeting where he presented just a couple weeks ago or something. So I had-- and I did study some of the statistics over there that they had, that they were showing the public. So, paid parking is like a big issue for me, obviously. I've never come here before. Based on the consultants' data, the parking situation in Exeter is not a shortage of spaces. And I heard Dan agree with that. I talked with the consultants at Town Hall. I noted to them that I have never had a problem parking in Exeter during any time of the day or night. And like 74% of the people surveyed, I am willing to walk three minutes to outside parking or streets. Only 57% to 60% of parking is being utilized during the peak time downtown, according to their study. Downtown, a quarter of the spaces are marked with two-hour maximum parking signs. And I'll just note that I would probably increase that number of the two-hour parking spots for Water Street there, and maybe even one-hour parking spots. A lot of people run in and out for things. The issue I wanted to raise is the negative impacts of implementing paid parking economically, culturally, and the impact on quality of life. First, a paid parking model is a burden, especially to residents of our small town that frequent and support our local businesses and restaurants. The accumulated hours over time of dealing with paid parking, kiosks or apps, is an economic cost for residents. In addition, the financial expense over years of parking downtown multiple times a week is a financial negative. And I do park, I bicycle, I walk, I do everything around here, on sometimes a daily basis. Like other residents, I focus the majority of my shopping and dining out in downtown Exeter. If there were paid parking, it would affect my multiple visits to downtown weekly. Parking is easy at present, in my experience. I do not hesitate to stop downtown when I need something. Visitors to Exeter love the ease of parking, even with a three-minute walk to the parking lots, I've heard. You know, they find spaces around, not just on Water Street. Secondly, paid parking is annoying, I think, and I believe most people feel that way. Culturally, it changes the aesthetics and quality of life in our small, quaint town for residents and visitors. It is a more urban-city approach, I think, to have metered parking. You consistently hear people saying they do not want to go to Portsmouth because of parking issues and because of paid parking as the most common option for parking there. Exeter has the feel of an older, small, historic downtown. I would not take that lightly and implement paid parking that would negatively impact that vibe of our special town. Third, the time management and expense involved in paid parking is an important concern. The maintenance required for parking meters and the personnel to enforce parking limits is a burden. I don't see volunteers doing it, not reliable, probably not sustainable. The staff needed-- the staff and employees, staff or employees, needed to manage tickets and collections of parking violations is another expense. It seems unnecessary to add this to our town administration and finance department demands. It was stated that the police do not want this responsibility. Finding employees at present is a challenge, as stated by the town, and it would be one more challenge to find the staffing for meters. You know, the labor shortage right now. I don't think young people want to hassle people about their parking. It requires expenses that residents should not have to bear. If it is proven that paid parking kiosks and apps actually generate revenue, I doubt it takes into consideration residents' hourly time, overtime, because I value my time, and parking expenses on a yearly basis when you make an economic analysis, a full economic analysis. How much is your time worth? If my time is worth, you know, somebody's $50 an hour or something, and they're spending 15 to 20 minutes dealing with meters, overtime, that's costly for a person and a resident. The expense of parking in your own town, that feels uncomfortable. And then there's the quality of life issue with that. And I think we all know that we all love Exeter, and we try and do all our business here, and are eating out here. At least I do. Many of my friends do. So, in summary, some of the ideas the consultants recommended and things were, they pointed out that employee parking can be accommodated in strategic areas of downtown and implemented through a creative and thoughtful approach. Designating spaces for business employees could be implemented, and maybe special decals for their cars. And the need to have paid parking downtown because employers are using the street parking on a daily basis is not necessarily a reason to burden town residents and visitors with a paid parking model, although I know there's some objection to that now. But I just would like there be a discussion of decals for maybe residents and employees, and there'd be more of an honor system and discussions with businesses about that approach, because we all want the businesses to do well and visitors to be able to come and buy things. Better targeted signage for parking areas around town, around downtown, and that, I thought that was a good idea. Some people don't know about those outskirts parking areas. And additional signs, like I said, for two-hour parking or one-hour parking might be an alternative to meters. And it would be an honor system. You know, there's some people that always cheat the honor system, but you would hope for the best. So the quality of life for residents frequenting downtown on a daily basis, and the ease of our visitors coming to shop, eat, and play in Exeter should be of the utmost importance for your decision. And I stress the detail every day. Residents are ultimately the local support for downtown in addition to visitors. So it's an advantage we have now, easy, free parking that would be costly in many ways to lose. Now, I know business people may have a different perspective on this, and of course, you know, discussion is good. Then, just real quick, the angle parking, I prefer losing 30 spaces to parallel parking. Doesn't seem like a good idea. I think bike lanes, I don't know, I go the perimeter outside of Exeter on my bike, or I walk, you know, along Water Street. So I'm not sure. I think biking can find other avenues besides just Water Street. I find the park in front of Town Hall to be very intriguing and a really creative idea to have a green space by Town Hall, which is like prime real estate going forward. So that's all I have to say, and I appreciate you having me here tonight and listening to me. And if you have questions or anything for me, I'm not a Stand Tech consultant, so you probably don't. So, anyway, thank you. And I'm sure you're all gonna be making these decisions with a lot of backup from those reports, which is great.
Thank you very much for your comments, and your email and your document are part of our packet, so that'll be part of the record. And certainly, you know, as we said after the consultants spoke, we have a long way to go, we have a lot to digest, and certainly, public input from folks like you are going to be very, very important as we move forward. So appreciate it and hope to see you back here. Thank you. Mrs. Ruffner, good evening.
Florence Ruffner, 5 Pine Street. And I'm also a business owner downtown. I've had my business downtown for, since 1986. And personally, I am in favor of meters, because I see so many people park in front of businesses, and they park there all day long. And sometimes they're business owners, which I can't even imagine, that you can't park two blocks away and leave your car there for the day. But it's really abused. It would be wonderful if the honor system would work, but I can't see that working. And we're very spoiled in my building. We have our own parking lot. But it's just, there has to be a better solution than thinking people are gonna be conscientious about taking up a space all day long. There are people, if they ride by a business, a certain business, if they don't see spaces, they tell us, they just keep going. And then we do have space, but people sometimes don't make the effort to go look for it. And parallel parking, ugh, I can't do it. I just, I had to pass it for a test many years ago, but I just don't see that as a solution at all. And the park is a lovely idea, but we have a lovely parks, a lot of lovely parks in our community. And I just, it's such a big change that I just can't see it, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Appreciate your opinion. Thank you very much.
I wasn't expecting to talk about this tonight. Paul Friedrichs, 9 New Fields Road. I just wanted to say I agree with Ann 100%. I don't own a business down here, but I like coming downtown, and if there were parking meters that I have to stop and figure out, whatever, I would do it a lot less, and that wouldn't be good for the merchants in town, I don't believe. So thank you, Ann, for making your presentation. That was wonderful.
Thank you for your comment.
May I say one more thing?
Sure.
Hi, Florence Ruffner again. It was very effective when Mr. Jones was an officer, and he did mark the cars, and every two hours you could only park. And the signs are still there, but people just don't pay attention. You know, like I said, they'll park eight hours, and it's just not, it's not good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? I want to see if there's anyone online. Okay, no hands up, last call. Great, thank you all for your comments this evening. Moving forward, we do not have any proclamations or recognitions. Our minutes will be available at our March 18 meeting from our last meeting. Skip that. No appointments this evening. We do have one resignation to consider from Mr. Jay Darden Reeves, who is tendering his resignation from the Budget Recommendations Committee. Thank him for his work this past season, and he said that he would entertain coming back in the future, and we certainly hope he does. If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Jay Darden Reeves from the Budget Recommendations Committee.
So moved, and thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Opposed?
It's unanimous, and again, we thank Mr. Reeves for his work on the BRC. Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our lone discussion item this evening. It's a continuation of a conversation that we had last week. It's one of our discussion items. This is the Pear Point Park update, 23 Water Street. Bless you.
Thank you.
So--
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I will be recusing myself again--
Of course.
For the same reason I detailed in the past.
Appreciate that, thank you. And we do have several emails that the board received in correspondence regarding this issue. So we heard, we heard from folks last year, last week, we discussed as a board. We asked Mr. Sharples to meet with certain individuals and do a site walk, and I believe that was accomplished. There's a memo in our packet to that effect, and we'll get to that in a moment. So as of today, we're 67 days into our ownership of 23 Water Street. And I think if anything this evening, before we're done discussing this, I'd like the board to consider moving-- board to consider moving forward with a formal motion, if we so choose, to establish and implement a formal committee so that we can start to move forward with that. I think what we can accomplish tonight is discussing that we're ready for that and putting together, not tonight, but for our next meeting perhaps, putting together the mission of this committee, the makeup of the committee, and then from there, we can proceed taking applications and conduct interviews as we have with other committees as well. So, with that, Mr. Sharples, if you'd like to come up and start and talk about the site walk for us, please.
So, to recap, I mean, I won't go through, you have my memo, I'll let that speak for itself and the several-page analysis I did. But we met with Dave Short, Keith Whitehouse, and Nancy Phillips on-site. We also met with staff before that. I went over there a couple times, took a look at it, and it was through the lens of what was being recommended at the last meeting is putting a fence down on the retaining wall and opening the, keeping, filling in the hole and basically keeping the grade and the slope the same, but filling in the hole and opening it up to the public part, you know, for public use. We met on the site, we, I had several concerns about that, mostly, and they're all outlined, I won't belabor them here, but the biggest thing was the uneven ground outside of the hole, and once you fill in the hole, there's still rocks, depressions, so forth. And we did a little digging, and when the fire happened in, I think it was the 80s, was it the 80s? Yeah. And the fire burned down, and then the fire department called DPW, actually, the night of the fire. And there was huge pile of rubble, smoldering, and so forth, so they had DPW come down with an excavator and some dump trucks, and they took the excavator, scooped the rubble out, and put it in the dump trucks and hauled it out to Simpson's Pit for disposal. And, but then, once it got to like, you know, just kind of down, they just started smashing it all down, like whatever was in there, you know, they just smashed it all down, put the fence up, and grass grew and so forth. So, it's really unknown what's under there, what's, you know, we know burned wood, whatever was in that, you know, various parts, what have you. And I'm sure there was probably some settling, that's why those depressions happened. I mean, granted, it's been quite a long time to settle, but we thought, you know, probably want to do some sort of investigation of what's under there. I'm not saying there's any, like, harm as far as chemicals or anything like that. I think they did an environmental assessment, at least a phase one, and didn't determine that. It was just more uneven settling, organic material underneath. You know, sometimes it's not good to, you know, put people on there until you know it's a stable surface. Kind of, we're going through that with the solar array at the landfill. You know, pretty extensive, you know, analysis of what it'll support and where, you know, where things can be put on there. So, that was one of the main concerns. There were other concerns with the existing retaining wall. I don't know if we've done any analysis on that or just had like, you know, I would like to have a structural, you know, I got, you know, we know structural engineers, I have a couple that, you know, I call on once in a while, maybe come down there, take a look at some. Before, we'd put a fence on it and open up to public. So, there was a few steps. There was some utilities, there's a gas line coming onto the property, there's a sewer line. I mean, they appear to be abandoned, but, you know, I don't know if they're connected to a main, you know, so, and they're sticking out of the wall, so you got to deal with those properly, too. We did come kind of a solution because we recognized that they wanted to bring exposure to the park, visibility, I heard, I think, I think you mentioned visibility, others like enhanced fundraising efforts. So, we did kind of come up with an option three concept that they seemed to be amenable to, to have the park visible, but then just put like a little bump out off the sidewalk for an area where you could have seating or something like that, and an open fencing so you could see the rest of the park, you could see it, but you couldn't really get on it until we figured out, you know, what was the safest way to do that. So, they seemed amenable to that, but I just talked to Mr. Short right before the meeting, and he might have an alternative option for the board, so.
While you're there, questions for Mr. Sharples?
No, I do thank you, though, for this report. It really does help to understand the situation. Structural engineering, what would that take to get someone in there, time, cost?
Oh, it wouldn't be much. I mean, I put in a $1,000 allowance for it. I mean, I know some guys, they would, you know, come over, take a look, you know, just to, like, before you put a fence in it, like the, I don't know what the concrete was made of, I mean, I don't know, you know, the content, whether it's reinforced, I mean, I don't know. So, it's just something to check, because you don't want to find out later that you probably, you know, it may not support a fence.
Yeah.
So, it's not, it wouldn't be a big expense by any means, but it's just kind of a, you know, check in the box, making sure it's safe.
Yeah, important box to check.
Because I don't, or there's some, there's already some, maybe there was some structural analysis on it done when the dam got removed. I don't know, I haven't found any of that information yet, but I can, I would still dig.
I wondered about it, and I've gone through all the paperwork I have from that, and I've not found any, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
Yeah, it was part of the old fish ladder. It was part, it was like part of the fish ladder, and they cut it off, so when you look down, it has a little lip on it. I guess that was, it was cut because it extended to the fish ladder. But I would either dig up information or have someone just go out and just take a look at it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Select woman Gilman, any questions for Mr. Sharples?
The only thing I have, and I thank you for, to the folks that went and for doing a, looks like a very thorough site view. If we do the bump out thing to make a lookout space or seating space, what do we have to have to support that? Is there enough of existing structure there, or when we have to put some kind of?
You'd have to probably, like, at the sidewalk, you'd probably cut down maybe about a foot. I mean, I'd probably, you know, and then, and then less as it goes out, I mean, because it drops away, and it would be more building material up toward the end, you know, than anything else.
Yeah.
So, I think something like that, you know, and we were talking about, what was that, reclaimed asphalt, was that? The, yeah, the reclaimed asphalt-type surface, it's like a temporary hard surface that would be accessible. I think that would be stable enough and big enough so you wouldn't have to worry about sinkholes or settling or anything like that. And it wasn't that big, it was just off the sidewalk, maybe, you know, 12, 16 feet or so into the site, and not, you know, not very far. Probably a drop of about a foot or so from the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Sharples?
I don't have any questions. I am eager to hear the rest of the discussion tonight.
Okay. I'll reserve the right to maybe ask you to come back up. Thank you, Dave. Mr. Short, your name was mentioned, I don't know if you'd like to go next?
Dave Short, One Dewey Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
Based upon the feedback from the select board meeting last week, and our site visit the other day with Dave Sharples, and then discussion among some of the committee members, I think it's probably in everybody's best interest, and you've kind of already stated your preference, and that's kind of where my thoughts were leading also, is not necessarily take a step backwards, but don't necessarily start anything immediately. The, at the last meeting, it was mentioned that the process that was desired at that time was to have town staff and engineers, designers come up with a plan for the park, and then form an ad hoc committee afterwards. What I would propose is to form that ad hoc committee now, and have that consist of members of the public, our group, the volunteers that have gotten together, in particular Jen Martel, who, she does this for a living, build parks. Get some people on there that have construction experience, and, because I've, from my own experience, found doing design-build with designers, owners, contractors is the most efficient way to go by far. And I've done it in town, up in Stratum, in three different projects, and I believe we got great products for significantly less than if we had gone and designed it in isolation. So, I would propose to, at least for the moment, not do anything to the site and gather some of the data we need, start the design process. There is some data that's out there. Nancy Phillips was mentioned the other day, that when they were doing the engineering for the site, they have some boring data, and she's going to try to get a hold of that, so that might give us a better idea of what's underground there, because they were anticipating putting up, you know, a substantial building, so even more than a park, you'd need to know what's under there. So, it would give us some time to do that. I don't think that going this route, we would necessarily have to postpone doing anything to the site until its conclusion, but at least we could get to the point in the design work and the engineering of it to where you could be confident in the steps that we're taking. So, that's kind of, kind of where we're at, and still love to do it, and I think that'd be a really smart, smart way to do it for the town, and with the goal still being to minimize or eliminate the use of tax dollars.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else from the public before we bring it back to the board? As I started with, you know, I think the goal this evening is to move forward with establishing and implementing a committee. I'm thrilled that we were able to pause a week and allow Mr. Sharples, our town planner, to go out and do a site walk with the volunteers that have expressed interest in doing some work, and I think that was productive. And so, I'm glad, Mr. Sharples, that you could do that, and I'm also appreciative of Dave and Keith and Nancy for your time and going out there with Dave. It's similar to buying a house. You don't buy, you don't buy a piece of property without doing an inspection. We were hit with a timeline, and we had an amazing opportunity, and we took it. But now, we have to do our due diligence. There was a fire there. I'm sure it's safe, but I know I would like to make sure that it's safe. I'd like to make sure that there's nothing in the ground, and I'm sure there isn't. We've had the piece of property for 67 days, and I think this is a big, important step to move forward. I think on behalf of the board, we're appreciative of everybody that's already stepped forward and offered their time, their resources. This board, if you look at some of the initiatives we've done in the last year or two, I think that we have proven ourselves that we think outside the box when we can. We have accomplished quite a bit in the last year or two without asking taxpayer, the taxpayers for additional dollars. We have thought outside the box to give funding for the tree committee, purchasing Planet Playground, even our siphon project, because that's been brought up. Yes, we did have to have a special town meeting, and we did have to ask for $3.5 million. But before we did that, we worked collaboratively with the finance department and found a way to ease the burden on taxpayers. So, we are not looking to turn away from anybody and everybody that either wants to donate time or money, and obviously, if we can do this with little to no taxpayer dollars, that's all the better. But there, you know, thinking outside the box is great, but there are policies and procedures for a reason, and we have to follow those. And we need to establish a committee, and once we put together the mission, which ideally I'd like to do by our next meeting, that we can start attracting applications, and we will interview folks like we do for any other committee. And certainly, some of the names that you dropped this evening are folks I hope personally will submit applications, because I think you're right. The committee needs to be made up of folks that, everybody brings something to the table. We have a lot of talent in this town and a lot of talent that are always willing to volunteer, so I'm very, very hopeful that we'll be able to take that next step very Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have a question on the, Mr. Sharples, you might be able to help with this. The boring report, I'm assuming this was done for a private person. It wasn't obviously done for the town. I don't know what, if any, we can accept from, so we don't even know the year of it, right? So, I guess my question is, what would the process be if we?
She said 18.
Accepted someone else's report from, I'm sorry, 2018? Is that?
That's what I just heard.
We just heard from the crowd, the gallery, okay. And that, and if it is still important for us to have our own analysis done. Kind of hard to answer this because we don't know what this boring report looks like, but...
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's the same one, but I had already hunted down a plan set of the great dam removal, and it has a boring on this site, it shows the boring, and I haven't gotten the time to go further into the research to get what that report is. That could be one and the same, the same one we're talking about. It's about the same timeline, too.
Okay.
It is, it's probably about 15 feet up from the retaining wall in the center of the property.
Would it have been done, the boring report would have been done after the dam came out? That was 2016.
Oh. Oh, no, this was done before the, when was it? I forgot when the, 2018 someone did it? Okay.
I don't know, I think that's what someone mentioned.
Okay. Well, then that might, and how many? I mean, it's a little bit.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Where the fire was, I mean, I wouldn't mind doing probably a little bit. But definitely read it, and if it's, you know, like, who's it from, and talk to that person.
The previous owners had done a design for a substantial building on that site, so I'm, from what I understand, those are the folks that have the, did the boring, so they knew what they could build there.
Oh, okay, yeah, that I didn't know. But that was, that was before 2018, wasn't it?
I can't remember. I know the HDC said okay to it, so.
That was when, because Peter only gave the permission to this boring, it's in the, it's on the plans that he gave permission to bore on his property, so that was, yeah, that wasn't 2018. That must have been like, well, wait a minute, when did the dam get taken out?
2016.
I was here.
You are. It's okay. It all, it happens to all of us.
But the dam was here when I was working here.
Yeah, it was when, what year did you start?
2016.
The vote was 2014, March of 2014.
All right, I thought it was later than that.
And it came out during the drought in the summer of 2016.
So, I'll, I mean, I get the, the points well taken. I'll, I'm going to keep researching, see, compile any, any and all information we have on that site, and we'll track it down through Nancy, and I'll, and I'll run down the plan sets, because I know they did some, at least one for the dam.
Okay.
So, let's see what that says, too.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, just one follow-up. On the structural engineer looking at it, rough estimate of turnaround, if we were going to look into that in the summer of your future? I don't expect it, but...
Yeah, I mean, I haven't, I got a couple of guys that I've worked with for years that, you know, probably do me, you know, do me a favor, come on over, I mean, for a half day, so, I mean, probably within a couple of weeks, I would imagine, I could probably get someone over here.
All right. Just, that's a curiosity thing more than any, anything. Thank you again.
Okay. But I don't think that's really necessary at this point.
No, no, I was just trying to have some thoughts in my head, and thank you.
Thanks. You have any thoughts?
Yes, I appreciate all the work that went into this. I have to, I'm in favor of actually opening up, having an open fence there as opposed to the closed one. It depends on what we do with the grass, et cetera. Because one of the thoughts that I had was with our natural resources planner, always trying to find a pollinator path, and every year at the Ale Life Festival, handing out wildflowers, if that might be a good site, maybe too shady, I don't know, to, you know, grow wildflowers for a while instead. But again, that's for somebody other than me to figure out if it's, you know, plausible to, for the grass to be removed. But I, so it's kind of a combination of option two and three with just opening it up so that people can see what we're trying to grow towards. I am...
You mean right now?
Yeah. I am in favor of, you know, establishing a committee for, and this is for a given period like we did for the...
Police stakeholders.
Yeah, the police stakeholders. So, there's a finite term before it becomes, you know, a regular piece of town property that... that we do the upkeep and et cetera. So that's where I'm leaning.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman? Melissa, and again, I don't know how safe it would be to keep it open right now and not have a fence there. So, I mean, that's something I'm sure we'd want to run by Primex. But my question to you was, I know that when we accepted the donation in December, one of the things that Town Manager's Office and Mr. Bisson and Parks and Rec started towards looking for new fencing and we were going to use impact fees. Can you update us, if you can, on where we are with that?
So Greg did say that there's enough money in the impact fees to put in a new fence. We didn't talk about doing the waterfront and the sidewalk, probably one or the other.
Okay.
But yes, there is money for that.
And we should, when Selectwoman Gilman's idea maybe ask Primex their thoughts on having it
Sure.
While it's still
I just mean an open fence, not open access.
Beg your pardon, I misunderstood your
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought you meant open fence, too.
Instead of a stockade fence.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm feeling a lot better about your idea. Mr. Short.
I, I think the idea of making the, the park more viewable, or the piece of property more viewable, is a good idea. But right now, as it presently stands, I think you'd have a heck of a time erecting a fence where that cellar hole is. Because I'm amazed that the fences there are still standing. Yeah, so I, maybe you could do a short area, you know, from the corner of Cornichello's over, say, 30 feet and up to the existing stockade where it was, you know, four, four-foot high fence or something that people could look over the top of. But I don't see, at the moment, extending a fence all the way across the top, because I just don't see where you'd put the posts.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Also, that just makes me think about a conversation that was had at the Arts Committee about, we need murals. So instead of having the fence as it is, perhaps we can have a contest for, I don't know, children or anyone interested, maybe run it by the Arts Committee.
Next week.
Instead of having it be as is, you know, make something of it while we're, while we're waiting.
That's a good idea.
Keith Whitehouse, West Side Drive. So my question to you guys is, how long? What do you think?
For a while.
What's, how long is it going to take for we're all down there to see the wild and beautiful river? And, you know, what are you thinking? I mean, you're saying all these things, I'm just asking, how long? What do you, what do you, what do you say, like, is this six months or is this three months or is this a year? Is it two years? We don't know?
I can't answer your question.
Anybody got any guesses?
Depends on the cost. I mean, we can get, we can get, we can get going and populate a committee, you know, in less than a month, you know, in a couple of meetings, but
Yeah, and I think, putting a timeline, I mean, I think we need to, first of all, establish it, come up with a mission, which ideally will be done by our next meeting. We get applicants, we interview them. We don't have the desire or appetite to obstruct something, but I'm not going to
No, I'm not asking that.
Committee gets put together, I, I honestly can't answer your
What's your experience, though? You have more than me. What, what do you think something like this would, would take?
I'll, I'll tell you, if it costs money, you're going to have to wait till either next March or depending on when the result comes out and, you know, what the, we're going to need public comment because the public wants it to be, you know, by the emails that I've gotten, you know, more than just the stakeholders that showed up here the other, last week. We want some public comment in the, in the design of the thing, what's going to be in it. That takes a little bit of time. I mean, we can organize it and advertise it as much as possible. But again, depending on the cost of what we need to do, you know, stabilization, access and those kind of things, it, it depends on how much we have to spend and whether or not we either budget it or, which would be, you know, starting in the fall, finalized in November, or if it's too much, then we need to go to a vote in March.
Right. Okay.
So maybe
I'm familiar with all that. But say we could do that without, without taxpayer money, what, you know, say we could just get the money. Then what? Then what? How, how quick can we move, brother?
Comment, don't
Tell me.
You know what, based on my experience, I think this is going to be done in phases.
Okay.
This is going to be done in phases and it's going to depend. It's going to depend on, you know, what we have. First of all, we have to find out what we have there.
Right.
Finish finding out what we have there. Then we, we're going to, we have to find out, what does the community want there and how are we going to do it? What do we have for resources? Do we have volunteers? Do we have other funds? Do we, can we apply for grants?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? This doesn't necessarily mean we're going to put this on a warrant next March. I mean, we, we will investigate every possible way to fund this.
Okay.
But that's why, you know, I'm loath to say to you, it's going to be done in six months, when I don't know. I mean, I see it being done in phases. What I will tell you from my experience is that when you throw something big at the community and it's, you know, it's, it's a lot of money and you're asking them to make that decision all at once, it's probably not going to be successful.
Right.
If we can take incremental steps in phases and we show the community our good faith efforts to not ask for taxpayer money, then if, if we do, I think we'll have a better chance of getting it. If that answers your question.
It helps a little, yeah.
Can I just add, keeping in mind, this is a town committee, so we have to do the agenda, it has to be noticed, it has to be here.
Right, right, yeah.
And how often are they going to meet? So
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with all that. I just, just was looking for an educated guess from people with experience.
And obviously, and I was going to get to this, Mr. Sharples, at least in the beginning, will be town staff, you know, aside to the committee. Mr. Sharp, Mr. Sharples in the past has been very good at getting projects completed. Mr. Sharples is extraordinary at finding grant money. I'm not putting any pressure on you, Dave, but what I'm saying is that this guy's good.
Yeah, we know, yeah.
He's good.
Yeah, I know.
And ultimately, Mr. Bisson will be involved because it's going to be a park.
Good.
But I think we're putting the right people in the right places to get this done. And I'd love to be able to say to you, this is going to be done, but I can't.
Okay.
I think we're too early. But we're moving forward. This is a big step forward.
Good.
I think.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Paul Friedrichs again on 9 Newfields Road. I am not part of the group of townspeople that brought this to you last week, but I'm here because I watched the, the meeting last week and became quite interested. I was very moved by the enthusiasm and the commitment of those individuals. So thank you all for doing that work and bringing it. And I really liked the idea of opening up some kind of vision towards the river so that people can start to get excited about it and perhaps build more of the idea of fundraising and not using taxpayers' dollars, which I think is a great idea. You know, I've taken a close look at that fence, including today, and it's not something you can paint a mural on. It's very slatted and falling apart. And one of the posts is almost falling into the pit on the west side. So it's not a very rehabilitative, rehab-able fence, but especially towards the east side, I very much like the idea of having some kind of fence you can see over the top of or even just chain length and a little sign saying, this park is going to be developed. And, you know, maybe putting a hint towards donations accepted and things like that. But I think it's a great time to build enthusiasm. It's been 35 years that that pit has been there. As Laura said so nicely last week, you know, it's the gap tooth in the smile of Water Street. And the sooner that we can give people the idea of a potential there, the better. I don't think that fence should stay up for a year and a half, two more years, which it clearly could. You know, until it's truly falling down, I think it's a great opportunity to build on that excitement. And I am very much in favor of some kind of a fence you can see the river from, from the sidewalk or that step in, as proposed in option three by Mr. Sharples. So thank you for considering that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Did you have any other questions or comments? No?
No, no, just waiting for us to collectively decide next steps. Other than we know, the next step is a mission statement for our next meeting.
So first, again, you know, Mr. Sharples will be town staff for, for the time being. Do we have any volunteers here on the board that would like to put together some sort of a draft for a mission statement between now and the next meeting? I'm happy to work on it, but I, would take any other
Yeah, I'm, I'm
I will.
Okay. Maybe we can collaborate in the next week. Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm pleased with that next step.
Yes, me too.
It has been there for 35 years and 67 days into our ownership, we're taking a giant next step.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion from the board to establish and implement a Pearpoint Park Stakeholder Commission with a mission statement to be developed by the next meeting, March 18th.
Is it a commission?
It's what we called the
I, I don't know, that's why I was, I thought you, we had talked about ad hoc committee, advisory committee, but if it's, that's fine, whatever you want.
Ad hoc, but I know that we were comparing it to the stakeholder commission, that was a, what are your thoughts on the wording?
There's so many combinations of these words.
I'm happy to call it an ad hoc committee.
I, you know, yeah, what, when it has a finite, I'm seeing it as a finite group to get this made. And then it becomes part of Parks and Rec. So I wouldn't necessarily call it ad hoc. I think the
Stakeholder.
Yeah, I guess it's community stakeholders, yeah.
I wasn't on the board when you gave the other one, so I have no idea.
Committee? Okay. Joanna, I'm going to take another stab at that. I would entertain a motion to establish and implement a Pearpoint Park Stakeholders Committee with a mission to be introduced at the March 18th, 2024 Select Board meeting. And immediately, immediately upon acceptance, Town Manager's Office will start to accept applications and the board will immediately commence interviews.
Shall move.
Second. It's a long
It's a long one. I just wanted to make sure I got everything
Yep.
For the record, there's a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Joanna, motion passes four zero. Mr. Sharp, family, keeping. Thank you. Thank you all for your input tonight. And again, particularly, Mr. Whitehouse, Mr. Short, thank you for your time with Mr. Sharples last week. That's very greatly appreciated.
Could I ask one more question before we move on?
Yep.
The letter, the draft letter to the Department of Environmental Services, I know, so the address has been corrected and the point person is now Mr. Sharples. Is this something that we should be doing now?
Yeah, that's a good question, Dave.
Or can we wait on this?
Thank you, Selectwoman Belanger.
You're welcome.
I would suggest waiting on that.
Okay, thank you.
And also, just, you don't know about it yet, but I'm going, I went to the planning board and I ran by an urbanized exemption request from Shoreland.
I know about it.
Yeah, you, yeah, you know.
I know about it.
You heard it. But also, the next stop is the Conservation Commission next Tuesday. And, you know, barring that, if we feel like we need to move forward, you'll, the Select Board will see it and then we could submit it to the state and actually not have to file that permit.
Thank you. Right, we're out going with that. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome back, Selectwoman Sharples. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, Julie, let me get to where we're supposed to be. Thank you. And your email did make the packet, by the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hopefully it was helpful.
Very helpful.
Bye.
Thanks, good to see you guys. Good night.
I'm getting there.
Got it.
So moving to regular business, Madam Clerk, we have one abatement this evening.
One abatement? Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax abatement for map 110, lot two, unit 82, in the amount of $107.12 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Namorous, thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any permits or approvals this evening. Ms. Roy, Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. So it's obviously only been a week, but we had Select Board last Monday and last Tuesday, DPW and our partners facilitated the Pickpocket Dam Public Meeting, which went well. The questions that were asked during that presentation will be put together and released online in about a few weeks. It's going to take us a little bit. And then joined Riverwoods, which you were there, and discussed some of our warrants with the moderator and discussed public safety buildings. So it's a busy, busy week for meetings.
Great, thank you. Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger.
Well, I attended the Pickpocket Dam Discussion Meeting. I did leave by quarter of nine, but I did complete the meeting on video. Thank you, Exeter TV, for recording that. And that is it for my report, really, except I just wanted to let everyone know, I know I touched on this last week, but it's now in the Conservation Commission on our website about the river haring monitoring in New Hampshire. So anyone that's interested, there's a phone number, there's an email. It's 10 minutes from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. This is going to start late, I think, what did I, I had it underlined and I think I gave my underline down the way. I think it's
April to May.
Yeah, but is it late April? That's what I'm looking
Early April.
Early April to late May, right? So anyway, be a great thing, it's counting fish, 10 minutes. And you can put fish in the search in the town website, because our assistant town manager tested this, and it came right up with the flyer. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We did have one abatement.
We, we
We just did it.
We did it.
That's okay.
It happened just like that.
It went so quickly, I didn't even realize. I'm so sorry.
No.
It's a magic trick.
It's one of those days, I guess. I apologize. Thank you.
Please don't apologize. Thank you for
Better to ask, we missed it.
I figured I'd double check.
We're a good team. We're all about team.
You're just determined to keep us here for more than 60 minutes.
Right, there you go.
Selectwoman Gilman.
I have no committee reports. Just went to the dam presentation. That's it.
That's it? Okay.
I got nothing. I didn't go to the dam presentation. I was out with my children on vacation.
Good for you.
Excellent. Selectwoman Sharples.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do have a report on a Facilities Advisory Committee, the FAC met on February 28th. I came away from that meeting with a great appreciation for my, my volunteers on that committee, they all have experience in facilities maintenance, facility construction. I witnessed a conversation between our Town Planner, Dave Sharples, and those three gentlemen, where they discussed the various aspects of like, how to build a new building, and this was kind of a perspective conversation around if the public safety building passes, what the best approach is, and we were very careful to say we weren't presuming that it was going to pass. We framed it up, I think, appropriately, but it was just an amazing conversation, and there's such great, a great depth of knowledge on that committee, and I wanted to share that with all of you. So that conversation probably went on for about 45 minutes, until the Town Planner had to leave to go to Riverwoods, to, you know, to join you in making a presentation to our residents out at Riverwoods, but it's just really a remarkable conversation. After that, we, we did some planning for the Facilities Advisory Committee's work for the coming year, and I just, just really wanted to say how much I appreciate those three gentlemen that are on that committee, so, that's it, that's my report.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and we appreciate that committee and the work that they do. I did not have any committees, I did attend, attend the Pickpocket Dam Meeting, which, the Town Hall, which was very well-attended, I thought our consultant did an excellent job with the presentation, our Town Engineer, Paul Velasic, was extraordinary, once again, there's some great questions, comments, input from folks, not only from the town of Exeter, but from the town of Brentwood, it was nice to see both towns represented, there was lots of different perspective, and I think it's important to keep the conversation moving. As Assistant Town Manager Roy stated, all of the questions and answers are going to be posted on our website, testimony can continue to be given from folks up to March 21st, which is the next River Advisory Committee meeting, and from there, Melissa, wasn't, was there one more date after the 21st that I'm missing?
Uh-uh.
So, we expect a good turnout at that meeting as well, and I want to thank, thank the folks at Riverwoods also for inviting town staff and me to, to visit with them, we spent an hour and a half going over several warrant articles, including the budget and the public safety complex, the room was packed, there wasn't an empty seat, folks had a lot of good questions, a lot of good comments, and it's just, it's always fun to go out there and visit, because they really have their finger on the pulse of the town, so I want to thank Riverwoods again for that. So that's all I had.
Mr. Chair, Mad?
Yes.
And you might have said it, because I was looking for it, and obviously, it gets whatever for me, but the Police and Fire Department are putting out a presentation?
Yes.
You want me to go ahead with that?
Yes.
Okay, so the Police and Fire Department have invited members of the public to attend a presentation on Wednesday, March 6, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, at our Town Hall, to learn more about and ask questions about Article 4 of this year's Town Warrant Article, the proposed design and construction of the new police station and fire substation on Continental Drive off of Epping Road. So it's a short 10-minute informational video, will be shown, an overview of the project. After the video, staff from both departments will be on hand to answer questions from the public about the project, and again, that's from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, Wednesday night, at the Town Hall.
Thank you very much for mentioning that. God, that, yes.
I just wanted to go over a few bills that are coming up on Thursday. HB 1086, which is about zoning Board of Adjustment hearings, to allow the towns to post on their website instead of in a newspaper of general circulation, because we are losing our newspapers of a general circulation. That was a split vote on the committee, both sides saying there's, not everybody has access to a website, and the other one's saying it would save the town money, and give us more time to actually post things, or give the public more time to see things than waiting for the newspaper to come out. Next one is HB 1120, which repeals the provision that requires us, the reflection of the municipal body vote on warrant articles, and right now, we say, Selectmen approve this 5 to 5, or 5 to 0, whatever, some people saw that as electionary, others said low-information voters are looking for that opinion to decide what they're going to decide, and it was an interesting conversation. And then there's one, HB 1125, which requires public notice and comments from, for all County Commissioner and delegation meetings, which I'm surprised anybody has a problem with, because it's already being done, at least in Rockingham. HB 1242 is relative to establishing a county-wide communication district, I'm not sure that one really is something that we're interested in, and then there's village districts, another thing that we may not be interested in, and that's about it. That's really it for things that would affect, yeah, for this week.
Thank you. Correspondence, we have a memo to the board from our contracted agent at MRI with a copy of the Department of Revenue's memo to the board indicating that the town's overall median ratio for 2023 is 62.9%. We also have our legislative update from NHMA, several emails written regarding Pearpoint Park, and also the email and presentation that Ms. Kenny gave this evening during the public comment. Reviewing the board calendar, remember, we have a special public hearing this Friday at 8:00 AM in the Novak Room.
I have a conflict, and I apologize.
It's okay, we'll have a call.
We will, okay.
And there'll be the third public hearing, March 18th.
I'll be here for that.
So that's March 8th in the Novak Room, excuse me, second public hearing on the Planet Playground property, 8:00 AM. Next Tuesday, March 12th, Town Election, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Talbot Gym. Our next Select Board meeting, regular Select Board meeting, is March 18th, and I went through April, and will suggest, and we can solidify this when Mr. Dean comes back, but if we go by our current schedule, then April 1st, April 15th, and April 29th, and somewhere in between, on a Saturday, perhaps, we'll have to find for our goal-setting session.
Can you go over those dates?
Of course. So March 18th, April 1st, April 15th.
18th, April 1st, okay, this is where it starts. Oh, I remember, I didn't put these on my calendar.
Because?
Maybe I'm too superstitious, maybe there's a wild write-in campaign that I don't know about. Okay, the first?
April 15th.
Uh-huh.
And April 29th.
You should stay with your process.
I know, I am, I'm not putting up...
What time is the Thursday's?
Friday, 8:00 AM.
Yeah. I am not putting them on my calendar.
It's good framing.
I am.
So, it's up in the air for me for April 20th, for Saturday, I might be in DC, I might be able to attend a goal session if I am in DC via Zoom, if that's possible.
We can find alternate dates.
Well, I don't want to out Mr. Shartram, but his birthday's the following Saturday, so I don't know if he really wants to spend a Saturday with us.
Of course he does.
It'd be a great way to celebrate.
What an honor to...
I mean, I'm looking at April 29th in my...
If I get special privileges, especially.
Okay.
Always looking for advantage.
You have to bring...
We have, we have three meetings in April, and I'm looking at the last April 29th, and keeping in mind your birthday, my wife will be thrilled if we could end in an hour, because that's our anniversary, but we'll see.
There you go.
You're in charge of the, keep the other agenda low.
She's, well, no, she's traveled for work before.
Yeah, I know, you guys.
So, I've spent many of her birthdays doing town stuff, so, I think that's why she keeps asking me to run.
She's like, if you're gone, I can do what I want.
Or she doesn't get any older, because she doesn't celebrate her birthday.
That's true, I like that one. We have no non-public this evening, I would ask if there's any other business over the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we stand adjourned, thank you, everyone, and good night.